Now being 6 o'clock, we will open the open session of Selectman's Meeting. We met in executive session at 5:30 in the small meeting room. First thing I'd like to say is this meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. All right, so our first item on the agenda is we've got Mark Capadona?
Correct.
Capadona from Colonial Power Group to talk to us about municipal aggregation. But we were going to quickly make appointments to the Town Administrator Screening Committee in case these individuals come up to be sworn in tonight because their meeting is Wednesday, so they need to be sworn in. So do you want to make the appointment?
Sure. So I have appointment slips. All of these are to the appointment as Town Administrator Screening Committee until dissolved. Barbara Gomez, Alan Wheelock, Nathaniel Sides, Susan Ossoff, Colleen Thompson, Patrick Dillon, and Marilyn Brown. So I make a motion all these people be appointed to the Town Administrator Screening Committee until dissolved.
I'll second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, excellent. Okay, so we'll give those to... Do you want to sign them?
Yeah.
And then...
Yes.
All right, so, Mark, why don't we turn things over to you to talk to us about municipal aggregation?
Good evening.
It's a tongue twister.
Mark Capadona, Colonial Power, 277 Main Street, Marlboro. I'm going to kind of tell us kind of where we've been, kind of where we are, where we're going. So how I'm here in front of you is I was issued... An RFP was issued by the OCPC, the Old Colony Planning Commission. We were the... Awarded the winning bidder. We took the town through its... The local and state process to get all the approvals. So let me take one half step back. What we're talking about here tonight for the people at home is municipal aggregation. And what that means is if you're still on basic service, the town now has an approval to go out and purchase energy on behalf of all the residents that are on basic service for Eversource. Eversource will still be your provider. They'll still take care of all the poles and wires. If there's any issues, you'll still call Eversource. If there's a problem with the power going out, if there's a problem with a meter or any of those issues, it's still Eversource. This program truly just addresses the electron running through the wire or the commodity piece of electricity. So on... There was numerous steps along the way. This board has approved a plan way back when. It was filed with the Department of Public Utilities back in January, and on August 25th, you received your approval. What does that mean? That means you can now go out and shop for energy which suits the town. You may want to look at something that's greener. You may look at something that's a little bit longer term. Eversource's rates change every six months. They change in July, they change in January. That's one of the reasons I'm here tonight is to talk to you about an RFP that we're thinking about putting out in the street with the suppliers that are serving aggregate load in Massachusetts. We were hoping that we would give you a kind of a Monday morning quarterback. It's when I do best. The... Eversource will... Let me just tell you the dates. Eversource will be out to bid on November 14th for a change of rates. The current rate for Eversource is now 10.75. That's their summer rate. They'll buy 50% more of their needs. They have already bought 50% back in what would have been May for one full year. They make another purchase of 50%, ladder those two purchases, and come up with a price. Unfortunately, prices are going to be high due to a thing called capacity, which is a non-bypassable surcharge inside the energy. That's so when you and I flip the switch, there's always power on the grid. There's no roaming brownouts or blackouts. And unfortunately, that's become a very expensive proposition. And the reason I tell you that is what used to cost you and I about three tenths of a penny is now going to cost us about 1.2 cents. So a multiple of four is how expensive that's going to be. What we were thinking is... I don't know if anyone has a calendar in front of them, but so no... It's not in stone yet, but on the 14th would be Eversource's final pricing. The day before that, we would deliver what we call indicative pricing. That's basically just a trial run to show you what can be done. So pricing, you can... We'll deliver pricing for six months, 12, 18, 24, 36, 30, and 36. We'll deliver you a green product that National Wind, very economical at the aggregate level. Also some Maine Hydro. We'll also deliver you any shade like a Mass Class 1 in case people were thinking green. It's much more expensive. So there's economical green products, and then there's some more that are local that are a little bit more expensive. And you can see what the differences are there and make some decisions. So what the process moving forward, what we thought would be is have a call, have some indicative pricing, show everyone here what was actually going to happen. What we're hoping to see is final pricing for Eversource on the 14th. We're hoping to get that sometime. That's a Tuesday by, say, Friday or so, so that we can have final pricing for you on the 20th. So what does that all mean, right? So that means Eversource's rate would be known starting what it would be on January 1st, so that when you got final pricing for your program to go live, you would know what that was, whether you were below that or not. If we weren't below that, we wouldn't start the program. We could just wait a week, two months, whatever it might be, when the market's in our favor. That's when we go back out to bid. That's why aggregation is kind of so powerful, because Eversource gets two trading days a year. Aggregation gets 210 trading days a year. So depending upon how you use that to your advantage, you certainly can do so. Does the board have any interest in green products? I just haven't had the conversation yet. Is it something that they're thinking about to deliver renewable energy? I'm not certain if you've given it any thought at all, if there's an energy committee or anything like that.
Well, we have with the sense of the town getting from the Metropoiet... Is it Metropoiet or looking at solar for the town? And I think that's been put in place, so...
A net metering agreement?
Yes.
Yes. That's excellent. Excellent. We're all paid for it. You should take it.
We are a green community.
Fantastic.
State certified, so I guess if I understand you, though, we have to pick one rate for the town. Is that the idea?
So you can pick it by rate class if you wanted to. So residential, commercial, industrial. If you combine them to one rate, aggregation gives you all that flexibility. It just depends on what you're looking to do.
But once we've picked it, then the townspeople have to make a decision within those confines.
That's correct. And I should have said this earlier, so this is very important. This program is an opt-out municipal aggregation. So, and I want to thank you because I do it every day, and I'm losing track of kind of the important piece here. So what that means is everyone's going to be included in the pool. Before the program ever starts, every single person in town that's on basic service would get a mailing with your rate and the new basic service rate, kind of an apples-to-apples comparison. If they do nothing, they'll be enrolled in the program. I want to state that again. So if you don't do anything, you'll be enrolled in the program. If you sign the card, you can go on our website, you can give us a call. You could... You would be never enrolled in the program before it ever started. Here's the good news is just because you made that decision whether to stay in or opt out, you can always get back in the program. There's never a fee or penalty to do so. It's one of those things that they really wanted to make sure at OCPC, that the end user had lots of flexibility. So at the end of the day, you're bringing them a choice that they didn't have last winter. But if they don't make a choice, they're going to have their basic service switched to the town plan.
And when someone's enrolled, is that ongoing? Is it every six months with each of the rate changes that Eversource brings?
So right now, what everyone's on is a switch every six months. You could change that. You could have a fixed rate for the next three years if that's what you chose. So you're going to kind of get a menu of choices when we do final pricing. There'll be a rate for six months. There'll be a rate for 12 months, 18.
So how are we going to decide between all those choices?
Well, I'm going to help you. I'll tell you, and the curve kind of tells... It's not like it's rocket science or any... As the curve begins to... As you get out there, so it's truly a... It's a commodity with a futures market, and as you go out, there's more risk out there, and prices start to rise a little bit. So, and you can see that. And it just depends on what people's wants are. Some people want... Think we're at... And energy prices are at historic lows. The problem is, is we're at high-capacity prices that leave energy prices high for the next 24 months.
Some people are going to... You know, we have a community as a spectrum. So some people would rather have green energy, even if they have to pay a little more, while others are going to say, "No, I want the lowest cost no matter where that comes from." How do other towns kind of make that decision?
So in your plan, you can have your opt-out product, the opt-out product itself. I'm just going to make up this, okay? Just don't... It's going to be a 12-month fixed-price standard energy, standard renewable portfolio. That's at 10 cents. I'm making up this number for 12 months. You'll have an opt-in product that may be 100% green with National Wind. That's going to be to opt in. So if somebody wants to opt in, they simply call, and they get the greener product. Everyone else will be automatically enrolled at that lower rate.
Okay. So we have two products?
You will have the ability to have two products if you so desired. Your plan allows for that.
Okay. All right.
Yes. So you can have a green product and kind of the low price. Most people, and when you see it's going to be very... It's very economical at the aggregate level to deliver what I'll call like a green E-product, National Wind or Maine Hydro, less than five tenths of a penny.
Okay.
So just to give you an idea what we're talking about, that would say like your basic product was 10 cents. You could have a green product for 10.5 cents. Some people make that their opt-out product just because it's so economical. Again, this is why I like aggregation. Kind of your choice to decide exactly how you want to attack that. But we're happy to walk you through all of the options that are there.
You put together all the literature that goes out to the townspeople?
That's correct. All has to be approved by the Department of Public Utilities, the Consumer Division. I have... It was in the filing, but if you'd like a copy, Denise can send you down kind of exactly what we would send out to each and every basic service customer.
It might be nice to get it on the website, too, so people are aware that it's coming.
Yes. Absolutely. That helps out tremendously, because the one thing we can't stop is the people to make sure that it's not a scam. There's so many... I mean, I'm sure... I don't know if you've seen this, but National Grid's basic service pricing came out. We're going to get kind of pamphleted and phone-called again this whole winter. Their price is like 12.6, so I assume that N-Star's price, Eversource's price is going to be high, and that means all the marketers will be out there. So to make sure that it's actually a town program, people will call. But if it's on the website, they might say, "Okay, this is what I'm looking at." It might just stop... Anyone who calls, we want them here at the Town Hall. We want those calls to be forwarded to us, so that we're taking the calls, but we can't stop the phone from ringing originally. But that would help to have it out on the website.
Okay.
So to what degree do towns in an area end up with consensus or on the same plan? Or are there just a bunch of plans and a bunch of options?
So I'm just going to... This just happened the other day. So in this general area, Abington, they went with a 12-month National Wind product with NextEra. Also, West Bridgewater, 12 months National Wind product. Both of those rate 11 cents, 12 months, straight. I think they'd probably be under the whole time, but it's 100% green.
And 11 cents is... What is it again now?
It's a fixed price for the next... It will start... Their programs are going to actually start with the... It's September, with the November meter read. So power will flow in November.
That 11 cents is compared to the 10.75 that you mentioned, right?
No, it's compared to National Grid's 12.6.
Oh, 12.6. So it's quite a bit lower.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Who is the 10.75?
That's what you're paying currently through N-Star. Both of those customers are towns, are N-Grid towns, so they pay a different basic service price.
And he said the price was going to go up. That was the summer rate.
It's unfortunate. I do think it's going to go up, and believe it or not, I think it will go up again in July, because SEMA, where you live, that's when capacity jumps here, too.
If we went for a year, and what happens after the year ends? Do we start this all over with notices again, et cetera?
You don't have to do the full notices, but you would go back out to bid at some point. We're in the market every day, so when we see something happen, if it was advantageous, we'd come to you and say, "Here's an option for..." I'm just going to say that we started at January. We did a 12-month through December, and I'm just going to make something of March. There's an unbelievable buy on 2019 futures. Let you know what the price is. This is what would work out. You could sign that contract in March of 2018 for power to flow in January of 2019. And when that happened, we'd update all the websites, and we do what we call a sweep. Anyone that's on basic service, if they've opted out, we don't re-mail to them, but we would say there was apartments or things like that that may turn over, then we would mail to those customers, so that they know the option exists.
All right. So if we weren't... If we wanted to try something different than we originally committed to after the expiration of this contract, there's nothing... We can try any of the different plans.
Absolutely. The first one could be for 12 months, and with NextEra, the next time might be direct energy for 24 months, standard power. And again, that's what I like, because it's no longer just whatever the utility's giving you. You get to decide.
Sounds like a great deal for the town. I mean, that's what we're looking at.
So we're in commodities futures for the rest of our term, is that...
We'll take care of the commodities futures on that side of things, Mark. So we will certainly direct you to the best of our knowledge.
So you think that you're going to have numbers from N-Star by the end of the week following the 14th, so...
That's what I'm hoping to be the case right now. Yes, that's correct.
So once we get those numbers, then we go out to bid, correct?
That's correct. That's exactly correct.
Okay.
So what I'm hoping to do is deliver you some indicative, kind of what the market is, so that we can see what that is. You're going to have some questions. We'll go back and forth. That way, then, when you have final pricing, you'll have already had a test run, and it won't be... Because we only have a window of about two hours. It is a market, and things move, so after so much time, we just need a signatory with the authority to sign for the town. But during that window, we have to at least have the conversation. You will have already seen the pricing, and be acclimated to the sheet and understand what the options are.
Okay.
And that's why we do that kind of... I'll call it a test run, but we call it indicative pricing.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. So then we'll hear from you the following week, and then we'll start moving, and then these rates will be effective January 1st of 18.
That's... As long as the market is favorable, that's a correct statement. That's correct.
What if the market wasn't favorable? We would just stick with what we've got?
We'd just stick with what you have until we found, you know, a hole in the marketplace that allowed us to get in with the savings.
Okay. So say the market's negative.
Yes.
And the market turns in March.
Yes.
We wouldn't be able to get the benefit of those new rates, though, until January of 19, right? Or would it be immediately?
Well, so you have to have a 30-day opt-out prior to. So let's just say you'd be about to... Somewhere around two months ahead of time, then power could flow.
Okay.
So in that scenario, June, you could have power flow.
Okay, because we didn't have a contract?
That's correct. Exactly. You know, get the mailing together, make sure everyone's notified. You're probably going to want to have an informational session, something like that.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. So is it better for us... Does it seem like most people go with a year?
Well, and again, pricing is high, and these were their first contracts, so I think it's a way to dip your toe in the pool. Certainly, I'm trying to think. The City of Gardner went for a 24-month. There was National Grid...
Did they get a better rate?
They actually did get a better rate, but I want you to know that they're in WC... This is energy stuff, so they're in a west-central Mass load zone, so they got 10.2 for a price for 24 months, which is pretty good. You know, the other people down here in SEMA are exposed to some higher capacity costs, so they... The 11 cents, as you can see, that's right through this winter and next summer, and it's only three tenths of a penny above what they're paying. It won't be above National Grid's rate, but it's just... It's the same energy cost, and it's only three cents... Three tenths of a penny above what you're paying now.
Okay. All right. And this will continue to show as two charges on our bill, like we currently have, one's for the energy and then one's for the delivery?
Exactly.
Okay.
The delivery is a monopoly, so there's nothing we can do about that.
Right.
The commodity piece has been kind of deregulated since 1997.
And that's why we still will continue to call N-Star if there is an issue.
All of those things that most people deal with. The one thing I would say, I had taken a little ride, I was here earlier, there's a lot of solar on roofs here. All of that works the exact same way. It's just a financial transaction with the distribution company. But I want to make sure that everyone understands. It's kind of... It works both ways, meaning if your rate is below, the way N-Star pays is they always pay basic service. So if your rate was nine and N-Star's... Let's just say your rate was 10, and N-Star's was 10.7 like it is. You'd be paying the 10 cents, and N-Star would be crediting you 10.7 cents on your bill, so that it's an advantage, even a bigger advantage, because you have the solar. But let's say you did the one-year contract, and you're still at 10, and the summer rate fell to nine. Probably want to opt out at that point in the program, because you'd be paying the 10 cents, but they'd only be crediting you the 9 cents.
Okay.
So it's kind of the program on steroids, if you kind of think of it that way. But you don't need to do anything. Net metering works with a competitive supplier. There's nothing... There's no change. It's just that there's some enhancements there.
So the town isn't opting out. Individuals would opt out, right?
That's exactly correct.
Okay.
The contract is the contract.
Right.
The individual's the one with the choice at the end of the contract.
Okay. So yeah, if the rate happened to go down, and it was better than what we're getting, they can opt out?
That's correct.
But we're still committed to what we've committed to?
That 12 months or whatever it would be.
Right.
Exactly correct.
Gotcha. Okay.
My only concern is explaining all this to the town.
Well, and that's what I'm hoping that I'll be able to do, that we'll have informational sessions. I think it's the hardest thing about my job. I'm... You guys know better than I do, but if people are busy with their lives, it's difficult to get people to pay attention until it's actually on their bill.
Get us a great rate, and it'll be easy to explain.
That's correct. That's correct.
Great.
Perfect.
Yep. Okay.
All right, very good. So you'll just contact us?
Exactly. I'll ask Denise to send an email this week, just with that kind of what the mailing will look like, so that you can see exactly what it would be.
And then we'll have to appoint a signatory?
A signatory that can sign.
Who would be available?
That day, somewhere between 12 and...
When you go out to bid.
Well, maybe 2 and 4.
Okay, so it's probably going to be either you or John. That would be the signatory. Okay, very good. Well, thank you so much for coming. I appreciate your time.
No problem.
A lot of great information.
Thank you very much.
We'll be talking soon.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Christine, you would want what he sends to be on the website, or once we take this and approve it? Like the example of what it looks like?
Um, I don't know. Why don't we figure that out?
Okay.
Yeah, because we certainly don't want this to be more confusing than it is. Okay. So at 6:30, we have got Jim Mulkey. Thanks for coming, Jim. So do you want to dive into something else for five minutes?
Yeah.
All right. How about we start with updates and discussions, community paradigm, executive search for Town Administrator follow-up. We've got our first meeting scheduled for this Wednesday at 5:00 PM, which will be... All the meetings will be with Bernie Lynch, who is our consultant. And then we've got interviews with the candidates scheduled for next week, the 3rd and the 4th, once again, starting at 5:00, both of those days. And those will be held in executive session. So part of the meeting will be an open session on Wednesday, and then they'll go to executive session at the end to discuss the potential candidates that we've received resumes and applications from.
So we have a standing committee that is going to go through. We believe we have some 20-odd candidates.
Well, there were 18 when we spoke with them last week, so there might be more.
Right. And the standing committee is going to weed these down to...
Steering committee.
Steering committee. Going to weed out most of them until we're down. They feel that the top three or so are the choice.
Their recommendations, huh?
And then they'll make that recommendation to us as a board, and then we'll go through, and we'll interview the finalists, the three or so, and then we'll make a decision.
And those will be in open session?
Right.
Okay. Okay. Fire EMS, consultant MRI follow-up.
Well, we went through the draft contract that they've submitted. We've agreed that we're going to move forward with Municipal Resources, Inc. We interviewed four different consulting firms. So we're going to tweak that contract based on the discussion we had today in executive session. From there, we're assuming we'll be able to sign it within the week. We have to supply them with data. They've given us a whole list. The fire chief feels that he can do this within the two weeks. They'll take that data, and then they'll start to set up where they're going to come in and start doing interviews with the fire department personnel and also people that we suggest around town that they should be talking to. Hopefully, by the end of October, we'll be looking at what the recommendations are roughly.
Perfect. Okay. Energy Conservation, Inc., follow-up on available grant money. That's actually going to be in our discussion at 7:00 PM with Seth Pickering from Mass DOR Green Communities and Thomas LaSueur from Energy Conservation Incorporated. Animal Control Officer, Animal Incident Reporting.
So we talked about last week the drafts for the incident report and the drafts for job description. We solicited more suggestions from the Board of Health. They got some more suggestions to me. I incorporated them into the documents, which you all have. So I thought we were pretty well all set, but I received last night from the Animal Control Officer some concerns about the animal inspector portions that we put in as to the legality of those inspections, as to the confidentiality of those. So I think I'm going to have to dig back into Mass law and see what I can find out. And I think I'm going to need a brief consult with Town Council again.
Okay.
So I'm going to ask permission for that. I think we can make it brief. It's really two sentences in there, but we want to get it right. I would hope that tonight, or I'd propose tonight, that we approve the animal incident report and we approve the rest of the job description with the exception of the animal inspector part, so we can put those into effect.
Okay. All right. Is that in the form of a motion?
That is a motion.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What I would, will do now that we have that is, with your permission, I'm glad to go back to the animal control officer, reiterate that every animal incident investigation needs to give us a report to the four organizations we have listed within 24 hours of investigation of the incident. And the rest of the animal, the rest of the job description is there. We'll sort out the animal inspections in the next week or two.
Perfect. Great.
Do we need to vote a half hour of legal service?
All right. I'll make a motion that we authorize Mark to contact. You're going to talk to Greg Gorbo from Colton and Page to discuss the questions on the animal inspector portion of the job description?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Town Administrator Screening Committee appointments. We already did that, so we're all set with that. Do you want to dive into the correspondence?
Uh-huh.
Still got a couple of minutes.
Okay. How much? Two minutes?
Two minutes.
All right. Okay. This is a letter from, well, essentially from us through the treasurer. This is the one attesting to the fact that only the town will be controlling, managing the new police station. We, I think we voted this last week and it's just a matter of you signing.
Sure.
That's in order to get the, start the bonding process.
Thank you.
This one, I'll save. This is an email today about a workshop. Citizen Planning Training happens every year. A bunch of workshops throughout the Commonwealth, especially useful for Zoning Board of Appeals and for planning boards. I will send, forward this tomorrow to Bree so she can get it to zoning board and planning board.
Perfect.
Two-hour sessions around the state. Pretty cool. This is a, or Chapter 90 final report. This is the engineering for Upland Road and Crescent Street, and we all simply need to sign it. So I'll pass that down.
Thank you.
Warrants that were signed tonight. EverSource $55, EverSource $419. Old Colony Planning Council agenda for the meeting that's coming up.
Wednesday.
Wednesday. And most of the new business is on area agency, area agency on agent. It's a tongue twister. And then the minutes from the previous meeting.
Okay.
I think you were right.
I'll be there. Yep.
Massachusetts Municipal Association. This is a flyer about fall breakfast series on efficiency made easy. Nothing local. Franklin's the localist, October 17th. I'm not going to be able to make that one.
Okay.
Zoning Board of Appeals. This is legal notice for a meeting September 27th, later this week, on Zero Churchill Road, appealing zoning permit denial.
Okay. All right. 6 o'clock, or 6:30. Why don't we turn things over to Jim? Okay. Thanks, Mark.
Sure.
All right. So now being 6:30, we'll turn things over to Jim, the, our highway superintendent, to discuss the road project on Main Street at Ring Road. So Jim, do you want to come up here? Or you can, well, actually, we don't have the podium in...
Well, it'll take, this isn't going to take very long.
Okay.
The reason we're discussing this now is the bad condition of Main, the end of Ring Road that lead into this intersection down where we're talking about. And before more dollars get put on that road, we have to at least investigate this intersection. There's a lot wrong with it. And I hired a design consultant to take a look at it, and he's highlighted some stuff. He's come up with some drawings. Now, they're not final drawings, but it's a start of what we can do down there to improve it. I just got these this week. I have not met with him for comment. We're still a long way from the end here. I don't know if you can see it. I don't really appear with a nizzle tonight. I just keep them awake.
I can help.
The pink represents the edge of the layout. This is the, the pink is the town-owned property line. And you can see the existing road is in dark ink, and the, the blue line represents the stone wall that some people seem to be pretty concerned about. And that's what is down there now. And the problems here exist here. People coming from 106 making this turn. There's a blind corner here, trying to scoot across the road. And then once they get to the other, into the triangle, there's two lanes of traffic there into, and it's basically a free-for-all as far as traffic's concerned down there. There's not a lot of control going on. So, and also, we have a residence driveway that comes out onto the radius of the intersection, which is never a good situation. You should be on the straightaway. So, and then the curb itself, which is a very poor line of sight. So all this stuff has been pointed out to me, which I think everybody that drives down there can see all this stuff happening. So that's what's here. Here is a plan that they put together. The pink again represents town-owned property. The yellow is existing, what's there now in the shaded areas, what they're proposing. The existing stone wall, the town owns 60 feet behind that stone wall. So basically, we're not getting rid of the curve, but we're softening the curve and having the intersection bump out into the roadway further, most out past where the stone wall is now. And then eliminating the two-way traffic on either side of the island. Well, that's what's being proposed at the moment. The utility pole in the middle of the existing island is, it's huge money to move that. There's a lot of stuff going on in that pole. There's three faves going down to the Denet. I don't have a number from EverSource right now to move that, but it's very, very pricey. This is a pretty good scheme. I'm not saying it's the best, not saying the worst, but it's, I think it's going to be the most practical, other than paving what's there, which, I mean, as far as the highway survey, great, just pave what's there. But as a resident, I don't think that's the best option. As far as the wall goes, I've been thinking a lot about the wall. It can be part of the project. It can be moved back. It could become a, possibly a CPA issue. Maybe rebuild the wall, repair it, restore it, lengthen it, whatever. But that's the stuff we're looking at right now.
So the, the reason for doing this is that that's an awkward turn that could cause accidents, I assume?
Right now, there's a lot going on there. I mean, there's not a lot of recent history there, but there's a pretty good history going back a ways.
So accidents is what you're talking about?
Yeah. And then a lot of near misses.
How many accidents actually have occurred there?
I don't have that there.
I'm not clear on where this whole decision is coming from. Have you done studies? I mean, where, I hear a lot of anecdotal information, but are, is there hard, are there hard and fast studies to back this up?
I, I, like I said, I retain the professional design engineer. It is opinion.
No, that's not what I'm asking.
No, we're asking about what caused it to begin with, this question. What is the body of evidence of things that have occurred that would necessitate doing this?
I don't have the data as far as accidents.
So then...
Then what, then what generated...
What precipitates this change without any sort of evidence of...
Numerous complaints to me by residents.
That's kind of weak evidence. There are numerous complaints about Ring Road in general because it's extremely twisty and windy and...
But this is something that we can do about. We can do something about this.
Old Ring Road?
No, this intersection.
Well...
The rest of Ring Road, pretty tough.
We've lived here 20 years, and the only accidents that have occurred have been drunk drivers who've been going too fast.
Oh, John?
You ever going to change that?
95% of all crashes are driver, human error.
Right. So... We've lived there for 20 years and we're, we are on that corner.
You've got the little driver.
Yeah, the driver, you have literally, you have literally talking about moving.
We're the driveway, and we've lived there for 20 years and haven't, 19 years, and haven't seen anything beyond a few cars going off into a ditch.
I don't know. I drove the ambulance for 13 years and the fire department for 25. I'd also be glad of that.
My, my big concern with this, it's a, because I don't mind changes and all of that, but it's, it's the speed on Main Street. And, and when I first moved here, I hadn't lived here 20 years. We've lived here two years. And when I first went to the dump, I had that problem, the experience, the blind corner. Well, I was, I was driving incorrectly. I cut the, cut the turn and I was going too fast. I go now, I've never had any problem. I, I know, I slow down. And it really, it's speed that's the problem on this road. I'm more concerned by straightening it out. Already 40 miles an hour is, is the speed limit. In general, when I drive, I'm usually 10 miles over the speed limit. I think a lot of people are. But when I drive on Main Street, I'm going the way I feel comfortable and I look at my speedometer and I'm going 40. That's weird. For me, I'm a, I tend to lead-footed and I'm, I'm an anxious driver and I tend to speed. And so I would say that there's, there's the, the speed limit then, you know, would be the answer, that we, we have people speeding on, on Main Street, and we're trying to solve it by straightening out the road. That's my opinion.
I've asked repeatedly for the police to come and sit in our driveway. We have a little L to just watch traffic and let people be a little worried or concerned because the police officers there, they might start taking seriously the speed limit. Nothing has ever happened. No one ever comes, no one ever sits there. There's never been one of those signs that tells you the speed you're going.
This does fix it.
To me, that we're going from zero to 100 here, trying to solve this issue instead of taking a little bite and not quite spending so much money and... I'm not clear on why all of a sudden we're doing this huge project.
I like to speak for just, I'm not just here to hold the plan up, so. I've, I've lived more than 25 years here and I see the same thing. And it's, it's clearly a case of people coming northbound, not observing the 25 mile per hour limit, coming around this corner too fast, which causes potential conflict with someone coming southbound, going left on Ring Road. Now, this is, you know, this is a, I'm not sure how to describe this. This is a, this is like the maximum fix to it by tearing everything out and doing it all over again. And that's pretty credible. But there is a design process, and I don't know if you've been to these classes, but I've been to one where you look at safety improvements, and they do tell you that safety is a factor, a major factor, but also other factors like the, the nature of the intersection, the, the character of the town you're in and things like that. Is, we as a community have to make a judgment as to whether we want to see this done or some iteration of it done or something lesser. And what I'm thinking, Jimmy, is that you've mentioned this is just the beginning of the process.
Well, yeah.
It probably would make a lot of sense if, and I don't want to put a burden on you, but I'll, I'll put it on people that aren't here. This is sort of a planning process.
Yeah.
There perhaps ought to be a series of public meetings that the planning board sponsors that you attend, and that the public will come to and get into these issues and say, okay, if we, what if we simply changed the speed limit and did some other traffic calming thing? Would that make a difference? And then get the input of the police department and the people that are bought this. Because that's, that's how they, those classes suggested the process work is...
Well, Christine's down below. I'll point at the people with hands raised.
Yes, I want Mark to, yeah, take this over.
So John Wilhamsen, and then Howard, and then Alan.
And I suggest the planning board partly because I don't want to overburden the selectmen who already have a lot to do. And this kind of is a planning process.
John?
Thanks. That's my suggestion, Jimmy.
So, you know, as far as studies go, you don't have studies that are going to pick up near misses. Having driven that intersection many a morning, dropping off at the Denet, I observed one where I nearly saw someone get completely clobbered because I slowed down to let someone come from the, coming south to go up to the Denet. Someone pulled right around, right around my vehicle and nearly went head-on into them. And over that time, 10-year time period, there were multiple incidents, at least a half a dozen of very dangerous near misses. Now, between 8:00 AM and 8:20 AM on Monday to Friday is a peak usage of that intersection. And it's not something you have normally, but it's also one of the times where we have sort of one of the bigger issues there. Now, I think, you know, there's, there's a lot of work that we can do to the plan, you know, trying not to widen the road much has a, has a slowing effect. Being careful about what we cut down for vegetation and doing it and keeping stuff right by the road has a slowing effect. Dealing with the speed limit, asking the police to do more. I think there's a lot of more input that we can have. But I, I think it's, I'd be concerned saying that we, you know, because we haven't had a major, you know, incident there, that the intersection doesn't need some work, at least. I mean, the, the, these triangle intersections are just, they're just, they just don't work well.
Anytime you have two-way traffic on, on, it's awful.
Nobody knows, and you watch it. People are doing this intersection, they know this intersection day in and day out, and there's constantly a, oh, are they going to let me go? And there's this thing. And then you add someone who doesn't do this, and that's where usually the trouble comes in. And both times that I've been passed stopping to let someone go has been people that were not regulars sitting there.
Howard?
This is the right over here, too, huh?
The pink is right over there.
Wow. So we own a lot in this city as well?
We own a lot of land when...
So we have options here.
When the county did this layout, I think it was in the 20s, they left a lot of room to do some stuff here. It was a taking, there was remnants of some sort of a building over there with a well, and it must have been a taking at some time to, to facilitate this.
Is it too much to ask to see the, the before rather than the after picture? I, I forgot what it looks like, just... So you're essentially, you're trying to make it more of a T-intersection now I can see.
So it's basically trying to crease the line of sight on the curb and do away with the two-way traffic on either side of the island. That's the two major things.
Howard had his hand up. Why don't you go ahead, Howard?
I, I see the problem bigger than just this. They recently repaved Franklin Street in Halifax. They replaved Center Street in Halifax. And essentially, people are finding a way around the traffic light and the mess created in Halifax because they haven't bothered to control all the ins and outs into their business areas. And so I see it, this goes beyond this intersection. And as far as I've been concerned, this is a plan by the state to pump traffic into Plimpton, and it's happening. They're coming now off of Carver Street in Halifax. They're coming down Franklin Street. They're coming down Center Street. They'd be, love to have you improve Main Street. And then they can get back on 106 and they don't have to go through the Friday night mess that's now Halifax. And as I say, this goes beyond this intersection. I see people shooting, if you happen to be headed to Route 44 or to track a supply or anything in my neighborhood, they're coming up Winnetuckset Road, they're coming up Cross Street. They don't understand a blinking red light means stop and proceed with caution. The police couldn't enforce anything up there if they tried to because there's no speed limits anywhere along Winnetuckset, if you know. So I, I think it's, it's a far deeper problem now that those improvements have been made. And so this is, this is just a connector, if you will, of through traffic, people who have no, little or no connection to Plimpton, trying to get around a mess in Halifax. Jim, I may be wrong in that conspiracy theory, but, but the, my observation. And then particularly after all that paving was due, some guy in a Volvo shows up and says he's a traffic engineer up on Winnetuckset and Prospect Road, so, saying they're doing some kind of study on behalf of us, so. I think we have to go really way beyond this because that's a reality now of what's going on in Plimpton. So enforcement, are we going to have, are we going to provide through traffic, although some other means? You know, one interesting fact of the Municipal Modernization Act is a, is a statute that we can vote to limit speeds to 25 miles an hour within our community. And I think I certainly am going to look and see that we adopt that because we'll, Plimpton is nowhere between someplace and someplace else. And I've always said that, I'll continue to say it. And I'm beginning, I'm seeing it in my neighborhood. Others will see it as well. People are simply cutting through. We need to do what's best for us.
I, for conspiracy theories, I blame Google Maps because...
Oh, yeah. Along with Google Maps and...
I have, I've been on the same shortcut for 25 years.
Okay.
I had no traffic, now I have tons.
All right. Alan was next.
Yeah, I have a lot of respect, Jim, for you and the department. Sometimes I think we take what you do for granted, which we should not, but thank you for all your hard work. This project worries me a little bit from just the character of the town point of view. Plimpton has always been so picturesque, and even though that might be, you know, a sharp, a sharp curve, it's very old, it's very picturesque, and it does add to the character of this town. Just with what EverSource has done to this community in the last six months. I mean, they're hacking away at the character, the rural character of this community. So I guess what I'm encouraging is whenever we're faced with something like this, I really hope that we err on the side of preserving Plimpton as it's always looked. That's my comment.
Okay. Mike, did you hand up?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, I appreciate hearing everybody's insights and, and I know it's no easy task to run the highway department. The, in, in thinking about this, kind of, I'm, I'm thinking that Alan has too, but then I'm also thinking of not putting unnecessary burden on the tax base at all and even, you know, the highway department, but from my perspective on this corner, the only real problem I've seen coming is that when you're cut, the speed limit on Ring Road, number one, because everybody flies down there. I don't know how Dave safely cuts his lawn half the time up there. And then on Ring Road, the speed limit as well. So I mean, I think enforcement's one potential thing to look at very hard before spending a lot of money. And then the, the right-hand side, you know, when you're coming, that's what, north? The, heading from Ring Road onto Main Street, if you attempt to take a right there, you are kind of taking your life in your hands because that line of sight is terrible, which potentially could be cured through some selected pruning and trimming and, you know, just so you have a line of sight. And then when you're trying to come left onto Ring Road off of Main Street, that's a tricky one, too. And I'd love to just see potentially if it was just some moderate clearing. I hate cutting trees, I hate changing character, but that's much more cost-effective, I think. And, you know, you're, if that works or improves things, then potentially maybe thinking of something like was done in Upland where, you know, it's just traffic one way on each side. I don't know if there's enough room with that existing island to accomplish that.
That's that design there.
Right. The intersection has an enormous amount of room.
There are all kinds of room there.
It looks to me like we could move the whole island over to another location, which might be part of the solution.
Well, potentially not really impacting somebody's property or, you know, I mean, if there's enough room to do that, people are happy.
All right, Mark wanted to speak next.
So I, obviously, we're not going to solve this tonight, and one of the reasons to invite Jim in is because this discussion had begun to come up among townspeople. So part of the, tonight is, is just understanding what the project is and hearing people's concerns, but the two other areas of questions are the funding source for this and what form the decision-making process takes. How does this get decided along the way?
Well, the design is, where we have contracts, the design will be finished. It's almost finished anyway. I mean, we're closer to the end of the beginning. So we'll finish that. And then as far as the funding source, I have to come up with a budget, see how much it costs to do this work, but I haven't even started that yet. And we'll decide if we want to pursue it at town meeting, then everybody votes, you want to do this or not. If not, we go through Chapter 90 process, which we apply for reimbursement from the state and the selectmen sign off on that. That's the source. As far as grants, to tell you the truth, I'd rather save our grant opportunities for bigger fish than this corridor for, the Middleborough corridor out of center of town is going to be huge dollars. And I don't know where it's coming from.
So you see this as coming up with a plan and then going out looking for funding? If the funding is with the town, then it would be a town meeting article. If the funding is with Chapter 90, it would be Board of Selectmen to decide.
I don't know even sure at this time how I would approach this. I would think I could do a lot of it in-house, like I did down the transfer station, and it would be a lengthy process, possibly cutting trees at the wall. Maybe get that far and stop. I have to plan in our pocket if we decide to use it. In order to do that, we have to cut those trees, maybe selectively cut them. This is far from decided what to do here. Yeah, I just, the only reason I'm bringing this up is the road's bad, and we've got to do something with the road.
Jimmy, what's the cycle on repaving Main Street? Is it like pave it once and then 10 years later again, or?
Depends on the street.
Okay.
We're going to talk Main Street tomorrow, where we leveled last year.
Yeah.
Approaching Main Street piecemeal tends to the middle, and this is the middle. This is where we're going to meet. We also have to raise it in between the bars, sink it. The guy floods his bar and it goes out into the street, so there's a problem, you know, we've got some issues down here.
All right, did anybody have any--
And not a lot of money to fix it.
Thank you. Couple of things, a lot of people I agree with, with Alan, kudos to you over the years. I've been in town 44 years, and you've brought a lot of wonderful things to the department. My concern is that we're just finding out now. I agree with John about the near misses because I've been, I've seen them too, but it almost is like we're taking a sledgehammer to something that maybe should have a few steps, like the people had said about, you know, trying enforcement because people do fly. I'm concerned with visibility lines because I walk a ton of times on Ring Road and take my life in my hands, but since they cleared at the bog on Ring Road and now people can see before they slow down, because they couldn't see around that curve with, you know, me in the bog in the middle, near Kingston, they come flying because they can see, there's nobody coming. And, and I'm kind of afraid here, it's busy anyway, and it's fast, and it'd give them a little more sideline. So I don't know what the best answer is, but I would just suggest that maybe we take some interims first before doing the whole shebang and maybe there's some other, maybe somewhere in Florida, let people know.
Okay. All right.
Hi, I'm Sabatina Leggero. We're building up 118 Main Street, right where you want to take the property away, so we're really concerned. My concern, there's a few concerns. One is if you straighten out that road, people are going to go flying. Even if you lower, you know, the speed limit, they're going to go flying. So I'm thinking, leave the road, put in a three-way stop. Now, people have to stop. If you selectively cleared the trees, you can see who's coming, who's not coming. And I know three-way stops don't always work, but they're going to stop everybody so that you just can't go 30, 40 miles around that, that corner.
Sixty.
Right. So you're forced to stop. You have some clearing now, and you can see who's coming. To me, that makes sense. You're not spending a lot of money, you're putting up a street sign, you're clearing some trees, and hopefully that will solve the problem.
All of those.
Anybody else that hasn't spoken yet?
It's easy to do.
Chris, did you want to speak?
Chris?
No.
No? All right, anybody else that hasn't spoken? Yeah, go ahead.
Living on Main Street, I agree that, first of all, I love how that bend looks. I think the island needs to be redesigned, and again, coming up with a way of slowing people down. This design speeds them up. So I would think that we would need to look at other design options. Again, basically reiterating what others have said, before we spend the big bucks fixing something that may only need a small fix, we look at other options. Because I am concerned that people, I mean, they, they take that bend as fast as they can, and then they pick up speed on the straightaway. And if you take that out, forget it. It, it, it takes away everything that, you know, makes Plimpton, Plimpton.
Okay. All right.
This lady here.
Yeah.
There he is.
And then you'll go next, Elizabeth.
No.
No. How about, yeah, first people that haven't spoken.
We also live on Main Street, and I always feel like I'm taking my life, you know, going to the mailbox because the cars go so fast along there and, and big rigs, you know, come so many. And it would be so wonderful if the speed limit, I think right now where we are, it's 40 miles an hour. To me, it really needs to be lowered.
It's being used as, Main Street is being used as an expressway. It's being used as an expressway, and it's not wide enough, it doesn't have the construction to handle big rigs.
And, and--
The big rigs--
Run away coverage.
The big rigs come six inches from me when I'm getting mail and they're going safely. I mean, it's going to be really scary. So we don't have any sidewalks, we don't have any, no, it's not designed--
Not that we want.
No, but it's on the road.
Elizabeth, you want to talk?
I just wanted to add to what John said because, again, there are certain hours, especially when school lets out in the afternoon--
The state thinks it's possible, basically.
Two or four thirty, and specifically, that's when I've asked the police to cover because school buses are one of the main culprits here. They fly around the curve, and something is going to happen one of these days. So I would love to see the speed limit lowered and again, some police presence. I don't know where else to ask. And it's been going on for years, and it is very specific to those hours. We're not asking for coverage all day long, but first thing in the morning and when school lets out. Even if you did it for a little while, I think everybody gets scared and starts slowing down for a while, and then you'd have to do it again. But again, I'm feeling like I want someone to hear me. These two times are scary.
Okay. All right. Did anybody else have anything they wanted to say? All right, go, John, go ahead.
Jim, if I may, just one question. Setting a speed limit, the lower speed limit on that road requires--
It's a process. It's a process.
So our best bet is to enact a bylaw that's currently allowed under the Municipal Modernization that allows us to, to control the speeds in our community. Elsewise, they're going to, they count bodies, Jim.
I don't know the process.
The state counts bodies and then they do something.
I don't know the process, but I would, I think maybe a town-wide speed limit, a bylaw.
Yes. Fundamental speed limit.
Well, the fundamental now is 40, it's what it is. And actually, I got some bad news for you. That grant we got for $200,000 for the rural road safety improvements for line painting, guard rail, and highly reflective signage and everything, many of our speed zones are posted too low now. So when the state comes in, it's not changing out signs. What's 40 is going to be 45.
Well, that was the study up on my street, Jim, 45.
You're getting a grant for the Commonwealth, because we built the road the way the Commonwealth will build the road.
So if we have a local option, we should adopt a local option.
I think the bylaw committee should look into that. I don't sure the legality is.
Okay.
I'd like to just speak too. I live on Crescent Street next to the Denet, and I've been in town close to 50 years. That, when you're coming from 106 down Main Street, the sightlines, if I want to go left onto Ring Road to get to Crescent, at commuting time, it's scary. It really is. The other thing is that people who are bringing their kids to school, they just fly. I mean, nobody, you would think when you come to the left, you would start to go to the left of the island and stop. They don't. Nobody stops. You just keep going and hope that nobody's coming the other way. We have the trucks coming down Ring Road. They are huge trucks, and even though I, I don't think they're exceeding the speed limit, these things can't stop.
Really?
I mean, they, they have a lot of weight that you have to pull down. So I would like to see at least we take a look at modifying this so that it's safer than what it is. My own concern is that you shouldn't be able to go, take, we should have a dead spot, I don't know what you call it, where you have to turn left, the other people have to stop rather than being able to cut across. I think some clear-cutting on, if you're going to go to the townhouse and you're coming down Main Street, it ought to be cut out a little. So if you do want to go left onto Ring Road, you can at least look down there and see if people are coming. Right now, it's okay in the winter because the foliage is gone, but summer and spring, it's, it's a little scary at times. I think we, we shouldn't just say no, we should at least take a look and see if we should be modifying this. Everybody wants the rock wall to stay, or if we had to move it a little, we want that rock wall to be there. It's part of the town, it's the character of the town. So I would say that we probably need a couple of hearings to just talk this through and see if we can come to some agreement.
Or meetings.
Or meetings.
Yeah, not necessarily hearings.
Please.
So my question is, because you're concerned about the speed, but again, I'm fixated on this three-way stop. If there's a stop sign, the speed can't be 40 miles an hour because you have to, every, every place that there's a stop sign, the speed limit drops. So if there's any way to put stop signs there, the speed limit has to drop whether--
It's graduated.
Right.
Yep, you'd have to put a warning grid.
Right, exactly.
Can you put a stop sign there, Jim? I mean, that's--
Stop signs are controlled by the selectmen.
So we can put stop signs?
Well, there's, so there's a lot of information, a lot for us to consider.
All I know about stop signs, since it was a sale, I just bought ten of them. Other than you might buy one.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Bray.
Because I grew up on this Main Street, so I've been here a long time. Are you thinking to put a stop sign so if I was traveling down Main heading towards the center of town, I'd have to stop?
Yes.
Make it a three-way intersection.
So where Ring Road is.
I cannot see that happening. I travel that road every single day, three times, four times a day. And I live on a bad corner now on Sawchuck. I'd love to see road markings. When I am coming back from Delphine and my daughter up at school at 7:00 in the morning, everyone takes that corner and look on the opposite side of the road. They're coming right at you.
But if you have a stop sign--
I don't, I can't see the speed. I don't know. I just think that's an accident waiting to happen. They tried that in Duxbury, and it didn't work. And now it's a roundabout.
Yeah.
I mean, there's some crazy, I think some, maybe clearing it off a little bit better so you can see around that corner.
What kind of room?
And making the intersection--
All right, everybody, let's listen. One person talking.
One conversation.
Maybe in coming from Ring and making that, I agree, widening somehow. But like I said, I've been here for 52 years. I grew up on the corner of Maple and Main. I rode my bike, I walked it, I did, I've done everything on this street. And it's, I can't see a three-way, a stop sign. I just don't think that it's, a truck coming down, they're trying to brake.
We can at least investigate whether it's dual--
Well, and just traffic calming measures, something--
I do, some clearing would be great. You'd be able to see a little bit better, and I know where they live on the corner, home's beautiful.
But if the truck's coming down, they'd have to brake if the, if the speed limit's coming down. And they could--
She's going to be listening to a lot of brakes.
Did Russell hear something?
Okay. Russell-- I lived on the bottom of this hill, and to pull into Sawchuck Farm, it is crazy what I hear every single day. I bless myself to take a left. I sometimes will take a right. When you say to take another route, I will take a right and go down center and come up if it's too crazy in the morning. Because I can't see around my corner. Jim's very good. When I ask, they will clear the corner, there's a guard rail there, but Scott used to have beautiful trees planted across there. They have all been wiped out. He's got the people pulling in, and when those trucks hit those brakes, I had a cone at the end of my driveway so people knew it wasn't stopped for my daughter to catch the bus. But when they hit those brakes and that person's going to take the, you should hear it. It's awful.
All right, Russell, you wanted to speak?
What I think is, the way the intersection was done, the end of Upland Road and Crescent Street, we've got to go around the island now because everybody used to come down that hill and just come all the way out into Crescent Street, and I'd be on my way home. They're all right in front of you, nobody would ever stop there. It's improved a lot from where it was just because of the design of that island. We need something like that, just going to have to slow people down and give them interview before they take that left onto Ring Road. This is going to solutionize, this is going to work. You've got to get them to slow down and stop before they take that left so they're not, trying to, you know, it's not, it's not a hostage to beat somebody coming from the other way.
Okay. Chris?
Chris, I'm 49 Ring Road. You know, obviously I go through that intersection like all the time. I really like the idea, you know, like the least in like putting up stop signs, it's probably the most economical thing to put there. And even if somebody doesn't obey the stoplight and blows through the intersection, they're doing the exact same thing they're doing right now. So it's, I mean, obviously they should stop, you know, like for the stop sign, and eventually they'll figure it out and everything, but if we put the stop signs there and the buses stop there, the trucks stop there, the cars stop there, it's, it's, you know, like 100% better than it is now. And if it adds four seconds, 10 seconds to your commute in the morning, you know, like--
You don't think they're going to be arguing, are you going to go, am I going to go, are you going to go?
If, that's okay. It's going to slow them down. It's going to be--
They're just stopping, thank you.
All right, anybody else?
I think that's a great--
Okay.
This is not more for Jim. I don't know, I go by this job in Novell every day, and I don't know that it goes with the town, but the police put those radar signs out. I drive like an old man, and every time I see this, this sign, I slam my brake on. There's these little ones you can get, they're this big, they, they're solar. Mine want to fall, they run out solar. Every time I come around and I see the thing start flashing at me, I'm like, whoa, and it slowed me right down. Again, I know it's, that's a little bit more futuristic because it doesn't look like an old sign and everything, but it's not like this massive thing like the police put out, it's just a small thing like this, and it slows me down every single time I go by there. And I'm only going 30 miles an hour when I go and by it anyways, so this is more like for a whole town thing. I don't know if there are other streets in the town that are highways or whatever, but put a couple of those out there, it's a cheap way to go, and it does make people who take, it's better than just a sign. That thing, I'm sure everybody in here, when you see that thing flash at you, you go, oh, am I doing something wrong?
Yeah, you look at your speedometer immediately, you go, oh.
Again, it's a little futuristic because it's, it's neon lighting or whatever it is, but if it's going to, not just on this street, but any street, if it's going to slow people down, maybe it's something to look at.
Okay. All right, well, we've got a 7:00 appointment, so we've got to wrap things up here. So what's the next step, Jim?
Well, I'm going to finish this design, more or less, we'll just talk about it again. Well, I'm going to finish this design, more or less, we'll just talk about it again.
Okay.
At least I'll have it.
Okay.
This, this is the way that the road should look, in my opinion. But we can try other things, too.
Okay. All right, well, let's, let's talk, and we'll get the chief involved and see what we can do for traffic calming in the meantime, and see if there's, what our options are to address this. All right, well, thank you all so much for coming, so more to come.
It's fun.
Yeah. All right. Thank you guys very much, and thank you for your patience.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we have got Seth Pickering from Mass D O R Green Communities, the regional coordinator. We've got Tom LaShure from Energy Conservation Incorporated, and...
Chris Collins with Energy Conservation.
Chris Collins, okay, very good, all right. Well, thank you so much for your patience. So you're here to talk to us about possible grant opportunities for the town, and kind of where we are now, where we need to be.
Sure.
So can I turn things over to you, Seth?
Yep, sure. So, Mark, I'm familiar with you. I've spoken to the select board back when you were on the board, and Mr. Trainer, I don't believe I've ever had the chance to present to you. So my name's Seth Pickering. I work for the Department of Energy Resources, the D O E R, not the Department of Revenue.
Okay.
And I'm the Green Communities Regional Coordinator here in the southeastern part of Massachusetts. I have 84 cities and towns, including Plimpton. And Plimpton's been designated as a green community since 2013. The town had to do five different things to be designated and was successful. Your initial grant amount was $141,550. There were a number of different projects that were completed here around town, at the Denet School, the DPW Barn, here at the townhouse and police station, the library, and also the historical building. So your initial, yep, yeah, right.
Just show you, we remember that.
Hey, look at that. We have a cash to check yet.
Well, actually, you kind of have. So your initial, your initial grant is completely closed out with us, which is a good thing. It means that everything has been done. That means that all the money that was part of that grant has been paid to the vendors that did the work, along with any of the incentive and rebate money that was available for the projects that were done through National Grid. Now, just to give you a little update on where the town is, okay? So ever since you closed out that initial grant, technically, if we can get your annual reports up to, up to date, you can be eligible for up to $250,000 in additional energy efficiency money here in town, every year, if, you know, if we close out each consecutive grant. Does that make sense? So, so you can't have more than one grant open with my department under Green Communities at a time, but you can qualify for what we call competitive grants, every year, if you're ready.
We aren't closed out now, though, are we?
Yeah, yep. So, so what hasn't happened here for the last two years is your annual report has not been submitted. So, so as part of being designated as a green community, one of your responsibilities is to file an annual report. It's not a real heavy lift. What we do is we, we email you an Excel spreadsheet. Basically, the spreadsheet is the report document that we requested you fill out and send back to us. Any information on that, that is from a preceding year, we fill out for you, and so you really only are reporting on the Green Communities aspects of your town for the year that we're asking for that annual report. It's not a heavy lift, but considering the fact that Plimpton's a small town, you don't have a lot of resources, it's understandable. You are not alone in being a town of this size with this size local government that hasn't submitted an annual report, you know, in the last year, maybe two. So your annual report for last year is going to be emailed to the town in a couple of weeks. It's going to be due December 11th. We missed out on an opportunity this year to get you some, what we call, technical assistance help from Old Colony Planning Council. We might be able to work with Pat. Are you familiar, do you know Pat over there? You know, if you have any LTA money possibly available to you, it's possible, they may be able to use that money.
What's LTA?
It's the, the grants, the LTA grants.
Type of technical assistance, right? Local technical assistance. Depends on what's in your, what's in your budget, and whether or not you guys want to possibly use some of those billable hours and dollars towards cleaning up the annual report scenario. So that's where you are with me. We would love to get your annual report deal squared away this year. We would love to have you have the opportunity to apply early next year for a competitive grant. Those competitive grant applications are usually due in March of any calendar year. But you have to have an approved annual report, and this year, we are holding the line with the deadline. So in other words, the, the annual report needs to be submitted by December 11. We'll review it. If there are issues and concerns and questions that we have, we'll get back to and work with you to get it finalized and approved, but you have to submit it.
Is this mostly financial information, or what can you...
No, it's, it's straightforward. It follows the five different criteria, which I'll go over briefly if you want to talk about it, you know, either on a sidebar or whatever. But the town had to do five things. You guys did Azerbright Siting for solar generation. You did a, you did a bylaw. So it keeps track of, you know, did you, did you permit any facilities that were subject to that bylaw? There's that. It also asks about where you are in your energy reduction plan, which is what we're talking about, and usually what the energy efficiency measures that will help you pay for, they are derived from that plan. The town did what's called an energy reduction plan as part of their initial application to be designated, and that was a five-year plan, okay, to take the town's baseline energy use. So that was the energy use of all facilities here in town, including streetlights, vehicles, and the Denet School. And you came up with a plan to reduce that energy usage by 20% over a five-year period. So the plan was approved. Those plans can tend, can tend to be a little, what's best, a little fungible, okay? It's a plan when you, when you do that. It's nothing that we, we don't hold you to the requirements. The town isn't going to lose their designation status or their ability to apply for competitive grants if you don't make the 20% reduction over the five-year period. In fact, when I look, your baseline year was 2011, so we would be right at that point now. You know, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, FY16, would be when your five-year period would be over. Okay, so we're already into, obviously, into FY18. So, so that's where you are. We would love to get the annual report deal squared away, and then start working with you on possibly doing some additional measures here in town. Your energy reduction plan was originally done by a National Grid energy efficiency vendor, which is what these guys do. It was a different one. The measures that are in here can be, you know, can be picked up and run with if that's what you think is appropriate, or you can do new and other things in the future if you'd like working with that process. Now, let me just take a little step back, okay? So, so I technically don't work with these guys, but we have worked in a number of different towns to help towns, basically, you know, with their, with their progress towards energy efficiency. Our roles are separate and distinct, except for the fact that these guys basically identify and then implement the measures that are, that are usually put in the energy reduction plans. So they're energy efficiency vendors for National Grid, and that, that's the way our interaction works. So I don't know if that, that might, I can see you have a question.
So is that EverSource, too?
EverSource and National Grid, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, I'm in EverSource territory. My mistake. Yeah, my bad. Sorry, I should have remembered that.
Maybe National Grid gas? No, probably not.
No, they're EverSource.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. Solid EverSource. This is Steve Gratton territory.
Yeah, Steve, and different from Mike, yeah.
So, so that's what I can do. Now, I just have to, I have to make sure everybody's aware of this. So whoever the town chooses to use off of the EverSource energy efficiency vendor list is up to you guys. Okay? So I can't recommend anybody to you or say anything, not so good about anyone. So these guys are here making themselves available to you because they are on that EverSource list.
Okay.
And if you come to me and ask me questions about that, what I would probably do is refer you to other towns in EverSource territory that have used these guys as their vendors.
That list, though, is an approved list?
Yeah, so it's kind of, it's an interesting deal. So as part of the Green Communities Act of 2008, the Department of Energy Resources in the act, it's a comprehensive piece of legislation, right? My division is a small part of it. There's all sorts of stuff in there. But one of the things was the creation of a law called Chapter 25A, Section 14. And what it did is it allows municipal projects that are energy efficiency projects, if the total project cost of them is $100,000 or less. It allows you to go to these energy efficiency vendors that are approved by the utilities. And so that satisfies the public process. They have to include the information on these guys to the DPU in their three-year plans and their annual filings. And so what that does is it takes some of the hassle out of the procurement. If, if your total project cost is $100,000 or less, and you use the vendors that are on the EverSource approved list, you don't have to go out and get, you know, three different bids and write a spec and a whole bit. Their function actually takes care of that, and, and their interactions with EverSource have set things like some of the rates that they're going to charge, what their overhead is, things like that. So, so, so it covers the public review, oversight part of the procurement for, for that law, as opposed to Chapter 30B and 149, where you have to, right? You have to go out for procurement, you have to develop a spec, you have to get three, you have to solicit three different bids, and go through all that process, which is all well and good, except that it slows you down, right, in terms of your construction schedules and actually implementing the measures. That's the biggest benefit of that, of that procurement statute, is that it really, it can compress. I'll just give you a quick, for instance, okay? So let's, let's say you get a competitive grant next year, right? And we announce it, like we did this year in the middle of June, and we get all the contractual work done, and we know from what your grant application said, what you're going to do and who you're going to use, right? As soon as the contractual stuff is done and you get a start date from us, you can get started on it. So let's, let's say you were doing more lighting or HVAC job in the Denet School, you know, you can get started on it and hopefully either get it finished before the school year begins, or possibly do it, you know, at your first chance at a, you know, at a vacation period or something like that, as opposed to, you know, I'm sure you're aware, I mean, sometimes if you have to go through the bid process and, and write the spec, it takes...
Takes a long time, sure.
It's to make sure the job gets done right, but it can be very time-consuming. So, so that's where I am with you guys. Any questions that you have, feel free to ask. I'm pretty sure all of you have my contact info. This is what I do. My function is to be available to all 84 cities and towns that I have in my region, any types of energy-related questions they might have, and I'm happy to. It took Christine and I a little while to connect, but it wasn't the lack of time.
Yeah, and then we were disconnected at the very end, which is par for the course.
So we, we would love to get you guys back in a position to be getting energy efficiency grants and getting some of our money. Our money's strong. Just so you know, our funding is strong. It's outside of appropriation. To date, it has come from primarily two sources, Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative auction proceeds, and also alternative compliance payments from the renewable portfolio standard. Most of our grant money this last time was from the alternative compliance payments. But to date, since May of 2010, we have granted almost $80 million worth of energy efficiency money to 185 green communities here in Massachusetts, and about 60 to 70% of that money is projects that are done. So...
That's great, yeah.
Try really hard to deliver our services.
How do we pick these projects?
Well, yeah, that was my question, is you've got the money, and we apply for the grant through you, and then are you guys the ones that help us determine what we apply for?
Sure, so typically, we would, typically, we'd come in and help you develop that five-year plan, so we would be kind of right in, looking at measures and putting together some things for you guys to look at already. Then after that, it would be just working with you to do the projects that you want, fit them in underneath the 250 mark, you know, every year, help you to apply with them and keep up with your plan. So that's where we would normally come in. We, you know, work close with Seth to make sure that we can put these projects through and they make sense, and we want to make sure that you continue to roll every year and be able to apply for grants every year. So it's about doing projects that you can get done in that timeframe, and then being able to reapply for the grant the next year. Want to add to that?
Do we have like a website where we can go on and see what other towns have done?
You can go to our website. In fact, if you shoot me an email, I'll send you a link to. You know, right now, if you go to our website and you click on our Green Communities map that shows 185 green communities, behind that map is almost 30 pages now of a spreadsheet that identifies every designated city and town. It tells you when they were designated, it tells you what types of grants they've received in terms of designation grants, competitive grants, what the amounts were, what the, there's a short description of what all the, all the measures were. So, so that's all, yep, that's all available.
Specifically, we can provide you with some contacts if you're looking for that, of other municipalities that we work with, too.
Sure.
Yeah.
So what these guys are doing, just so you know, is the municipal equivalent of Mass Safe. So this whole, this whole project about having audits and energy studies done at no cost to the town on their buildings and, and processes, you know, if you had infrastructure here in town, you know, like water, wastewater treatment plants and pumping stations and stuff like that, these guys could look at those as well. You know, it's not just, it's not just structures. And it's, it's the same, it's basically the same thing. In terms of the projects that are recommended, and I'll be glad to come back and meet with you guys and show you how this worked with your initial grant, if that would be good for you, in terms of, they're going to identify projects that are going to say it'll serve, it'll save this amount of, of energy, this is the projected cost savings. They can only work with, you know, rates and things that are, you know, fairly current, and as we all know, you know, fuel, electricity rates can vary. But it's, you know, it's, it's a good estimate based on, on what they know. And then they'll also, once you commit to do the projects, they will also make the applications to EverSource for all your rebate and incentive money, that when you parlay that with our money, hopefully gets most of the things that you want to do through Green Communities done at no cost to the town. I know, it might almost sound too good to be true.
I mean, $250,000.
But it really, it really is happening. I mean, you can talk to people in Kingston. Kingston just, they, after their last competitive grant, they've, they've gotten over $1 million from us.
Yeah.
Just from us. And, you know, their incentive and rebate money from EverSource is probably in the $200,000 to $400,000 range, so...
Sure.
Yeah, and, and so, you know, it's a good program. Just so you know, I mean, I'm from here, you know, I love my region. I grew up in Middleborough, went to Mass Maritime. I love being able to help these towns that are nearby, right? And Middleborough is going to apply for green community status, right? And I'm just going to say this to be candid with everybody, because it seems like everybody, if I, as a kid, delivering the Enterprise and the New Bedford Standard Times would have thought that Plimpton and Halifax would have been green communities before Middleborough, I would have said, no way. So, you know, you guys, to be commended, I, you know, it's been, it's been a little slow since your initial designation, but the fact that you did it, and it was real, I mean, there was strong support here in town for...
There is, for green is, absolutely.
So, you know, and it's kind of, it's one of those things that keeps giving, you know? I mean, if this works right, you guys should see... I mean, if this works right, you guys should see, you know, avoid costs into the future for your energy bills. And I think, you know, and quality of, you know, environment in the building. So, like, this, this building's a classic example. The way I got to know John Henry and then later Dale was through, there was a federal grant that paid for the windows and a few other things in this building that we, you know, we implemented for the feds. It was, it was an ARRA project at the time, right? It was a stimulus deal. But then, you know, some of the things that we did in this building have to do with, you know, air sealing and weatherization stuff. And I'm pretty sure that people noticed a big, a big difference almost right away in this building.
Would your grant cover a consultant to come in and help us actually identify areas that we could do?
That's what these guys will do.
Okay, that's what.
No cost, yeah. Sure, so pretty much every step of the way, we'll come in and do no-cost audits. So, we'll come through, look at all the buildings, put together a few measures that we think would work for you. Then we usually come through again with some contractors and take a look at some labor pricing, and so we're able to put all that together for you. Then we reach out to the utilities and we're able to work with their application process pretty simply, so we can get you the incentives that they're looking at and then supplement that with Seth's $250,000, so.
We have a new police station that's going to go up. I don't know where.
They don't do new.
So, we don't do new. But, you know, when that was, when that was being designed and specked out, you know, what I, what I told Dale at the time was, you have to interact with the Eversource people for new construction to make sure that, you know, you maximize.
Sure.
Rebate incentives that are available. But, you know, direct grants, they don't have a match, and from my program, they don't exist for new construction. One of the things that you were required to do, become a green community, is to adopt the Stretch Energy Code, which at the time was, you know, a more energy-efficient code than the base code. But I got to tell you, right now with the way the building codes are, there's almost no difference now between what's considered the stretch code and the base code. You know, that's the way everything is going. You know, energy efficiency, new construction.
Makes total sense.
Well, I wish I heard that in more of my towns.
I asked you the same thing today. That's how I knew.
Yeah, so.
Always ahead of me.
So, you know, so that's the deal for me. I'm always available to you guys. Be happy to come and meet with you in any forum that you'd like to explore your future opportunities. So, that's grant monies up to 250. So, if you don't get to 250, you know, when you go through that list that I was just mentioning, you'll see some towns, you know, 150, 120, 200, they may not get 250 every single year because they don't ask for the whole thing. And we do have some projects that you might apply for that we will not fund because, you know, we have to look at what the paybacks are and, you know, whether or not things should be considered really a capital project as opposed to, you know.
Sure.
We're supposed to be paying for energy efficiency. And so, we have to pay, we have to pass the straight face test with the Attorney General's Office. That's who we answer to. You know, if our grants got audited by anyone, it would be the AG's office. So, you know, it's hard to make the case for us to pay almost the full boat on a 40-year payback boiler in certain buildings when we're supposed to be doing energy efficiency. You know, the thing's probably dead and needed to be replaced years ago as part of your capital plan. It's not really, you'll get energy efficiency improvements, but.
I'm going to deliver it.
We try, we try to be really, John, just so you know.
Sure.
Again, you can check in with any of your selectmen and, you know, get a fairly good presence of green communities going that way, over towards the South Shore, from Kingston North, Charlie Seelig in Halifax, Pembroke, recently. So, you can check in with them. We really, really, really do everything we can to get you a grant.
Okay.
And all the grants are on your website, so we can see what other people have applied for, what other projects are?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you ever do anything with electric cars or anything like that?
So, we had a, so the DEP had a really good grant program called EDA that was really DOE our money, but we were sharing with our Secretariat Brothers and Sisters. That was so popular, it was fully subscribed and isn't available right now. That doesn't mean other things will not become available. I'm not sure how up to speed on this stuff you guys are, but, you know, the state has the Global Warming Solutions Act, and there was a decision just a year or two ago by the Supreme Judicial Court that said, the goals that are in the act are, they're more than goals, they're supposed to be met because of this legislation. And so, Commonwealth has a target of having like 300,000 electric vehicles on the road by like 2030.
Really?
Don't hold me to, don't hold me to the date, but that number is accurate. And I don't think there were 10,000 electric vehicles on the road in Massachusetts. So, it's a, it's a big priority for the governor and his administration. So, we'll see. I think that there's a good chance that you'll see additional opportunities for electric vehicles and charging stations, you know, because you need the infrastructure in place in your towns to be able to, you know, incentivize people to do it on their own. So, Middleborough's, Middleborough, again, a little bit of an unusual scenario, I wouldn't have expected it, they're municipal light, we're municipal gas and light. But they get into the program, both the GNE and the town have a number of plug-in hybrids, which can be combination, you know, a plug-in hybrid can charge the battery, but then you can also have the ones that run on the battery and they kick over to a gasoline-driven propulsion system like a Chevy Volt. But they've also bought a couple of, leased a couple of bolts, I believe, in Middleborough as well, which are electric, you know, all-electric, about a 230-mile range. And it's been surprising, a number of towns that I never thought would go for, especially for things like inspectional services, building inspectors, assessors, people that stay within your municipal boundaries, right? And a town like this is small, the electric cars are a real good, a real good match, and you're not burning fossil fuel and you're not having a lot of the same kind of maintenance issues. When you, if you'd been able to take advantage of the old grant, if you leased these vehicles, at least a three-year lease, they were, they're costing towns, you know, anywhere between 50 and about 80 bucks a month to use them. So, and again, if you're really interested in that, I can get you in touch with a couple of towns that are doing it. That opportunity's not available right now, but as soon as it is, if you're interested, we'll make sure that you get all the information.
Yeah, I think we'd like to know about it when it.
Yep, yep.
Terrific. Well, I look forward to looking at your website and seeing what projects other people have done, and it'll probably spark some ideas of things that we could do in this town.
Yeah, you definitely, you definitely have some opportunity here in town. I can state that unequivocally.
You gentlemen are going to help us with that.
Yes, absolutely.
Your school's in a nice target reach zone. And so, so even though you're regionalized, because only Plumpton kids go to that school, you guys can choose. And here's the other thing, so when you get, when you get one of our grants, the contractual agreement is between my department and you, the selectmen. So, you get, you get to choose which projects are going to get funded. All three municipalities in the Silver Lake region, I was talking to Christine about this, are green communities. It's the only, it's the only regional school district that I have that has full green communities participation. You know, most of them are two off, not three. But you guys are the only regional school district that I have that has all the, all the towns are green communities. So, there's opportunity down the road for that as well, depending on how willing the town is to share your potential green communities' competitive grant money.
Does that still limit it to the 250 for all three towns, or does it become three times?
No, it could theoretically be 250 from each town. Yeah. You know, towards the RSD. So, that would be, that would be really cool.
We're talking about.
Well, you know, I mean, that's, that's down the road and that's in the future. But I will say this about that, if you guys could pull that off down the road, you'd get some real good, you'd get some real attaboys for that.
Maybe more money?
Not necessarily more money, but, you know, that, that's a tough nut for, for me in some of my towns, you know? Because, I mean, you know the nature of the beast, right? There's always, there's always a debate about we should be paying what percentage and how that whole thing goes and who is and who isn't.
State's been good to us with these technical grants, you know? I mean, it's impressive because, and we've noticed since we do things that, say, apply for a grant, it sort of builds that the next time you're in the queue.
Yep.
You know, you're a known commodity.
It, I mean, it helps to just be familiar with what's available.
Yeah.
But I will tell you, and this is, this is true, and I don't, does John Henry still live in town?
No.
Because I heard he was not, possibly.
You can talk about.
Well, no. So, that ARRA grant, when it first came out, it kind of, it kind of sat and nothing was happening for a long time. And so, I came over, I'm like, hey, so, you know, where is it? What are you going to do? He says, "Ah, you know, I think we're just going to have to give it back." And I go, "No." I'm like, "No way."
No, you're doing those window outs.
And so, you know, we really, you know, we get going and change that way thinking and get some stuff done. So, yeah. So, any questions, any concerns?
Thank you.
On how the process works, there's no such thing as a silly question, you know, we want you to be, we want you to be as informed as you need to be to make an informed decision, you know, my department, my program.
Well, thank you Seth very much. Thank you guys for coming, too.
Sure, absolutely. I didn't know what you wanted to talk about, next steps, or?
Why don't we, first, we need to do the annual report. So, let's get that squared away and then we'll go from there.
Do you help us with the annual report?
We can assist with the annual report as much as we are able to, yeah. I'm not sure how much of it we can really provide. I'm not sure what's on the annual report, but.
So, let me, let me say this about that. It's your responsibility to do the annual report.
Right, we need to do it.
That's where I'm going to leave that.
And they worked on board the last couple of years to do this, so.
So, I can't get, and I'm not going to get in the middle of any arrangements that you make with these guys on that.
Okay.
I'll talk about that another time.
Anything we could do to help you, you know, we certainly would, you know? And I'm not familiar with it myself.
The challenge is, we don't have town coordinator right now. Very shortly, we will have a town administrator.
Yep.
Probably not by December 11th.
Right.
So, we'll be fumbling a little.
So, what I think we should do, if I, not to put words in anybody's mouth.
Yeah.
Why don't we reach out to the Old Colony Planning Council? Why don't we see what type of hours they might be able to give you to possibly help you with the annual report? And I will help that, you know, if, if you have somebody that's working on it, I'll help them.
All right.
Yeah, we'll get it done and we do have some DLT money.
The problem has been is nobody was doing it.
Right.
For the last few years. And I understand those circumstances, that's not, that's not a criticism. That's, that's a fact. But if we can get somebody to help you with it through Old Colony, then I can help them. I can't do your annual report for you because we review it. So, that's.
I have a meeting tomorrow with Old Colony Planning Council, so I'll ask them.
Okay.
If they can, if they'd be willing to help us with our annual report.
Yeah, you didn't get what we call the, we call those a Meda Grant, Municipal Energy Technical Assistance Grants. But that doesn't mean that in the other.
Well, we have some D LTA monies for other projects that have kind of been put on hold because the planner left. So, they've hired a new planner, but we're a little bit behind. So, I think that there will be some money available to help us with something like this.
So, I need to meet that new planner as well.
Yeah, it's, I believe she was the planner from Hanson?
That's what I hear. I don't know her.
Yeah, I can't remember her name, but I hope to meet her tomorrow because she's helping us with our housing production plan.
Okay, so you can really help me, Christine, because I have an email into Pat.
Okay.
Asking about.
Meeting.
When can we?
Okay.
I haven't heard anything back yet.
Yeah, I can check.
Criticism, just, you could say, "Hey."
Hey, Seth wants to meet the planner.
Yeah.
Yeah, no worries. Do you have any of the card? I've got your, all your contact from your email.
Yeah.
No worries.
So, all my stuff is on the website.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll check, I'll check tomorrow.
Trying not to be cheap with my cards, but I do have to.
No worries, we all have budgets. We don't even have cards.
So, the only thing I recommend is that we, alongside taking care of that, we might want us to start getting, looking at the audits, and so that's no requirement from you guys other than just the time to kind of look through the buildings and whatever you can show us.
Okay.
And so that, you know, we have time to, you know, we wouldn't want to be doing it, you know, right at the beginning of December.
Okay.
If we could avoid it, move along so that we can be, you know, before our March deadline here.
I'd like to take a look at what's, you know, the towns have done before we, then maybe sometime by the end of this month, we can just.
Yep, sounds good.
Absolutely.
Sounds good, yeah.
Sure.
I'm also going to provide Christine with some documents that you may or may not have electronic access to, that are your documents.
Okay, great.
And so, basically, it'll be aspects of your original application and also your energy reduction plan.
Good.
And then some documentation on what was done with your original grant, so you can get a feel for, you know, what you originally were looking at, what you've already accomplished, and maybe what you want to start looking at in the future.
That's terrific.
Okay.
Great. Well, thank you guys so much for coming.
Thank you.
Do you have any more questions, anybody? Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Get you some cards.
Great. Thank you, it was nice to meet you guys.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
And say "Q" to Seth for not giving up on me.
You bet.
Is Bossy still president of National Gray?
Thank you.
I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. I don't go nearly that far.
So, you guys are local.
Yeah, right out of Hanson.
I used to sell to New England Electric. I was with digital equipment.
Okay, excellent.
I was with digital equipment.
Very good.
And my account was, was New England Electric.
In Westboro.
Yes. And she, she was in the internal audit at that time.
Yeah, we'll talk another time. I used, I've been in the generation, you know, I was a DEP air pollution guy, so I worked closely with New England Power guys.
Okay.
That used to be based out of Westboro.
So, John Dickerson and?
Leo Sacaranza, Brad Spooner, they were, they were, but they were air pollution guys, you know? And so, I'm, I'm not sure, but you know, that whole game has changed so much with the, you know, with the '95 changes, you know, and they sold all the generation.
Yeah.
And it's very different.
Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you for coming, nice meeting you.
All right, have a good night.
Yep, me too.
All right, you want to pitch correspondence?
Sure. So, this is a request for time with town council from the town clerk, and it regards town meeting articles passed at the town meeting this spring, Article 29, which had to do with fixing a previous procedural issue. Within the article, it said the town should consult town council to ensure it had right. And then Article 25 had to deal with a couple of animal complaints, where within the article it also suggests that town council, or town clerk, or that town should consult with town council. You each have copies?
Yes.
And so, I make a motion, well, I guess maybe we have to discuss if we want to put a time limit on this or simply grant town clerk time with town council.
I think we should just grant the town clerk.
So, I make a motion, the town clerk be granted time with town council to deal So I make a motion the town clerk be granted time with town council to deal with these issues.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
She won't abuse it.
No, absolutely not. And she needs to get squared away.
Right. Plimpton Halifax Express had an article on our meeting last week. I think most of us were there, and so we know about it. There is a flu clinic in Halifax this Thursday from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. People from any town can come, town can come. I have sort of jokingly talked about sunrise tomorrow, which is 6:35. This one's interesting, though, because sunset is 6:33. I think this will be the first day this fall that there's less than 12 hours since, since spring. There was a letter...
So with the flu clinic, there's no age restriction or anything like that?
It does not report that. In fact, it's generally...
Oh, it says anyone nine years or older.
Anyone perceived that the elderly are the ones that are usually recommended the most. Unfortunately, as I understand it, the elderly may be the least responsive to the vaccine, but probably I'm offering medical advices on a species...
I think there's two, though, aren't there? Because I just had a flu shot and it, it's for the old people.
Oh, geebers.
There isn't a much more potent one for old people.
Yeah, that's the one we have.
It's supposed to be better. But the state licenses me to deal with dogs and cats and horses and...
Not people.
That's a whole...
Well, thank you, good news.
That's a whole separate issue. There was a nice letter by Gavin Murphy about the Main Street stone walls.
Now, was he here tonight, Gavin?
No, he was not.
Okay.
Flu, and that completes the newspaper and with satisfaction. That completes response, correspondent.
Terrific. Okay, so dates to remember, our next meeting is 10/2. We're meeting with Amy Kessel from Hope, Man and Page at 6 o'clock, I believe. Is that it, Bree? I think we've got Amy at 6:00 and Tara at 7:00.
Yep.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, board goals for coming years, financial management. We're still working on the CIP plan.
Yeah, I'm waiting for the vehicle, the vehicle pieces to come in.
Okay.
I'll, if they're not in by the end of the week, I'll give them a boost.
So we need fire, highway, and then the IT plan. And we'll have it all squared away. Okay, and she's got everything else. Okay, public safety.
Committee meets Wednesday night. I'll either attend or watch the recording.
Okay. And they, we specifically scheduled for the small meeting room because I believe they meet in here and they wanted this, their meetings are taped.
Yep.
So that's part of the reason why the screening committee's in the small one. And they're back-to-back. Technology, you guys had a good meeting, didn't you, about the board last week? Didn't you talk about the board?
Oh, yes.
Oh, we did.
Yeah.
That's right.
Which would have been so handy
I know.
for today's presentation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So John Belozzo of Maccas was gonna supply us quotes. And, you know, I'm surprised he hasn't sent them. I told him, send Steve Pello a copy, too, so that he's really acting as our technical support. So I will follow up with that. But we're getting them.
Excellent. All right, grants. We met tonight and hopefully start the ball rolling to possibly get some green communities grants. So that's, that's a good thing. Voluntarism, I don't have anything new to report, just...
No, maybe just the wonderful committee as part of the town administrator
Oh, yes.
search that are all volunteers.
Absolutely.
Let's just mention it, yeah. The liquor license for events. Do we want to chat about that a minute?
Um, well, it's not on the agenda, but do we have to have it done today?
Well, this is gonna go into correspondence, it couldn't...
Okay, well, then, if it's in correspondence, why don't we bring it down? Yeah.
This is the liquor license transfer.
Quite a packet.
Oh, it's a packet. And it will be the first one that's changing hands. The Plimpton Conven, Plimpton Gas and Convenience has been sold.
Plimpton Gas and Conven, okay, so Steve's, the mobile.
Steve, yeah.
Okay.
Not the garage, though.
Not the garage.
Just the convenience store.
So they are going to be, this in case will be transferring ownership. They are still gonna be under Plimpton Gas and Convenience, Inc. It's going to be doing business as Plimpton Gas and Convenience.
Okay.
Now, they need to have a meeting, they need to have a hearing scheduled for the, in this case, until the hearing is done. And the sale, I believe, is gonna be September 29th. They will not be able to sell liquor.
Okay.
The sale is going to be
They will not be able to sell.
September 29th.
The sale of going through, yes. So they dropped the ball a little bit here. Can we, okay, and schedule a hearing? So give him an okay to put this in the paper. It's gonna take weeks. It's a four to six-week turnaround, just with the ABCC, to approve what we send them.
Well, what, does the hearing commit us to anything? I mean, if it's just a hearing.
No, it's just a hearing.
I'd say we can, we can do that. There are a couple of questions I have.
And then here's the other structure.
But they're separate from the hearing.
Okay.
And this was some other thing. So there's been a lot of liquor license things that are coming up.
Yeah. We need to spend some time just going through the whole process. Relative to the convenience store, I think the Board of Health has to give us some guidance. As I understand, there's a shared well septic system. I don't know what...
But I don't know how that impacts the alcohol license.
No, it doesn't impact the alcohol, per se, but it, it does impact potentially the sale, I would think.
The sale of the business, the property?
Business, yeah. And I don't know, maybe that's not a non-issue. I'd just like Board of Health to say, we have no issue with that.
Not our concern, really. I mean, not our authority.
We wouldn't be transferring a liquor license if, if in fact the businesses couldn't be split.
I don't know why the businesses couldn't be split.
That's what I wanted to ask the Board of Health. Is there an issue there? If there is no issue, fine.
Well, that's really, the people that are buying it, they should be checking that.
I know that they were here today and they were, they were in the clerk's office because of business certificates and things that Tara was working on with that.
Okay.
Let's approve the hearing, but let's also put it on the next agenda to chat through, are there issues that we need to address? Just so we don't get down the road and find there's a problem.
So the hearing probably has 14 days advance notice?
Yeah, I can get in touch with the attorney.
Okay.
We just wanted to get an okay to get the... Will it be 14 days after the 29th? I'm not sure. So they hired this attorney to do the liquor license part. So the two of us have been...
So you, we need a motion to approve going ahead with the hearing.
So we'd have to set a date.
Once we...
Because she's got a, you gotta post the hearing in the paper. And I think you've gotta post it around different places as well.
So are you feeling...
But I could tell him, can we, we got an okay? And then maybe go, because we do meet again, but that's not closing until Friday.
You know what? I feel like we're kind of being pushed here. And I'm sorry that they were late in getting their ducks in a row, but I want to put this on next week's agenda so that we all have a chance to look at this. And I'd like to read the ABCC regulations and, you know, I'm, yeah.
To the I-RAD.
I just don't want to be pushed, so...
So can I tell him that we're on the 10/2 agenda?
We'll put it on the 10/2 agenda. We'll discuss it then. And if he wants to come in, he's more than welcome, but we need more information before we can proceed with this.
Like you said, none of that could get submitted.
Okay.
Do we feel like we need to talk to town council, just to get clear on...
Yeah, I wouldn't mind just talking with, with council because I'm sure there's gonna be all sorts of requirements with insurance and...
Just so we have that before, yeah.
Before we do the hearing. Yeah, okay.
There is also a liquor license process write-up that we should take a look at, too. I thought I had it.
Which may be in the K and P loose leaf.
Okay.
It was done, you know, and signed by, I think, probably you guys, back in, when Joe was here.
Back in the old days?
Okay.
Back in the old days.
Okay. All right, so I'll contact Greg. He may not be the right person, but he can point me in the right direction of who to talk about for the process of transferring a liquor license. And then, in the meantime, I mean, because I think there's background, background check requirements. There's all sorts of stuff that's required.
And it's all done through that
Okay.
application, and which is filled out.
Okay, perfect.
It's just not signed.
Okay.
So that he has to have a hearing date in order to submit that.
Okay.
So we'll take it up next Monday.
We'll take it up next week.
Great.
Perfect.
So we do have some other liquor license things. I think this is what John was...
No, I don't need it.
I can forward this, it's in an email.
Perfect, perfect.
I had it printed out because it from the sender.
I don't want the whole thing.
No, it's in an email, like it's, they're attachments.
A bunch of documents in an email?
That you can see, and it explains what he is. We have some people that wanted to apply for one-day liquor licenses. Hold on. There's four in one place. One of them bringing reguete.
Did you get a chance to talk to council about these?
I did not.
All right, let me talk to them about it. So no action on those either.
Because this is what was voted, you got, saw that, how this was done.
Can you email me that, too?
Nobody has submitted anything to me.
Well, nothing will happen until it gets submitted.
Nothing's gonna happen if people don't submit.
So there is this question about outside organizations and them licensed and whether they also need a one-day liquor license. And it would be really nice for Greg or whoever to kind of clarify for us.
Yep.
So we do have a write-up on how that works. Town of Plimpton, one-day liquor license, special license policy.
Did it put the date on there? It's, I do not ever remember.
July 2nd, 2012?
Yeah, it was before me.
But in any case, we need to revisit, just make sure. We should probably have legal say...
Right, that it's a legal document.
That goes right along with the small event we write.
Exactly, yeah.
Because we just got to get clear on this, and we want people to be clear on this.
And these events, you know, they're talking about having outside caterers alcohol and food.
Yep.
Which is fine.
Yep.
But we need to get a certificate of insurance so that the town's protected, et cetera. I know when I was with Piopis, they, and they're one of the caterers. So they come in and they have their own, a separate, like, division, if you want, where they supply bartenders, et cetera. They have to be TIPS certified, which means they've gone through alcohol laws. And I just think we should set up those guidelines in here so that we don't run the risk of having some liability suit because somebody got drunk and fell down or something.
Piopis did send documents over for one of the events. And they're really good.
Okay.
They, they knew what they're doing.
And they'd say they need everything and what you need, and it was all there. But the rest of this is not...
Kind of a mess. Okay, so I'll talk to council and I'll report back on that. So you want to put it on the agenda, Bree? Is the report on...
Do I invite these people to comment?
At their option.
I mean, what's on the agenda, we're gonna be talking about it, but, yeah, we'll see. All right, so...
Oh, I got one more thing, I'm sorry. I cannot grant an application, I mean, a permit, and all voted on, if taxes are owed, correct?
Correct. Yeah, I believe, well, I don't know if we have a bylaw in place for that. I think that they're going to put a bylaw.
I thought it was at our discretion. In other words, it says the Board of Selectmen have discretion to, to do that. I'm not suggesting that we do it, I'm just saying...
Yeah, that it's our discretion?
Yeah.
What does it say?
So it says the licensing authority may deny, revoke, or suspend any license or permit, including renewals and transfers, excuse me, of anybody whose names appear on said list furnished to the licensing authority from the tax collector. So that would deny it. But somewhere further on, "The Board of Selectmen may waive such denial, suspension, or revocation if it finds there is no direct or indirect business interest by the property owner." It's just there as a sort of a release valve if somebody comes in and...
Thank you. So what permits are you looking to...
For the license in order to sort of get a one-day liquor license if somebody owes a tax?
Why wouldn't, I think the taxes need to be paid.
And it's for the person who would be applying for the license, correct?
The person who's holding the event.
Yeah, the license holder, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not the, not the caterer.
Or the place where, or the establishment where it's at.
One of these is where there's gonna be an event at another location that they don't own. And so it's effectively a farm.
This is sticky, too.
Yeah.
So, so the applicant owes taxes, but their location does not.
I don't know that we've even checked that, but...
I didn't check that, my buddy, I'm sure he's up to date.
Okay.
And there's, there's four, right now, three events that are gonna be there. And I was told a fourth.
Okay.
And they were all two fundraisers and two dinners.
My understanding, one's a nonprofit and the other three are. Boy, I read it for profit enterprises. So we do need to take some, get some clarity around this whole schmuck.
I might be a little hesitant to worry about the tax issue for a one-day liquor license. I mean, that's a whole bunch of different, one-day liquor license from a business license or, you know, a license for a year of operation. And it's kind of a heavy club for...
I'd like to just see, though, I mean, if it's a number of years, that's one issue. If it's just the latest year and they're a little behind.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Yep. So, and then there was a May in there, which sounds like it gives us discretion to take that into...
Right, right.
Okay.
And how many events are we talking about? And how many events are we talking about?
Right now, there's four.
There's four. And you said three of these are for profit.
Right, I think, the mayor vote?
I believe so. I, I...
Well, it doesn't seem like it would be right for somebody to be able to earn money if they owe the town money.
I don't think they do.
They wouldn't because Mayor Boo would be coming in too.
Oh, they don't? Okay.
No, they don't. It's a nonprofit.
Okay.
The fundraiser people who want to hold the event owe money.
Okay, okay.
More to talk about.
All right.
So there's four.
More to come. Perfect. All right, so we've got Amy and Tara for next week. We went through all of our goals, minutes. Did everybody have a chance to read the minutes? We've got 9/11 open session. We've got 9/11 executive session. And then 9/13 open session mark.
I didn't see 9/13.
Pardon?
I got 9/11 here.
9/13 was just with Bernie, wasn't it? Yeah, that was a meeting with Bernie.
I believe I sent that out. I have copies if you want. It's pretty short.
I think you did. You sent it out.
September 18th. Oh, okay.
Pretty...
So no meeting, no minutes from last week, right, Bree? This is from the following week.
I sent them, please.
Okay.
I think they just came just before the meeting.
Okay.
So can we save those for next week?
Yeah, why don't we hold the 18th? All right, so...
Okay, so for the 9/13, I'll make a motion that we approve them as printed.
Okay, so I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. So that's...
Okay.
And so two 9/11s.
Two 9/11s. One in open session and one executive.
This one we're holding.
Yeah, the 18th we're holding.
Okay. And 11, where's the other?
It, there's a little one from Mark that was executive session.
You want that one? I have a copy of that.
This 9/13, it was just open.
Thank you. Yeah, 9/13 was open session.
Do you want to copy that one?
No, I've seen it.
Make a motion that we approve this as printed.
Okay, second. All in favor? Aye. All right, so now we're down to the open session.
Open session, 9/11.
I haven't had a chance to really go through this.
I didn't hear you.
You didn't have a chance to really go through it.
You feel comfortable with it though.
I was okay.
I was okay with it, yeah.
I'll make a motion we approve these minutes as written.
Okay, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, rants and raves. You want to go first? You have to go first.
All right. I don't know if I'm a rant or a rave. I haven't decided.
All right.
Or is that for you to decide?
It's for us to decide. What do you have, Ken?
So be careful.
I gather there was some mention of a hearing on Wednesday night and I wasn't sure the context it was mentioned in because I came home.
It's the town administrator screening committee. Is that the one you're...
No, he's talking about what's in correspondence.
Oh, oh.
Churchill Road, I think it was. Zero Churchill.
Churchill Road, public hearing for a grandfather law generated a lot of interest. I was curious, it came up in the content. I wasn't here.
It was just in correspondence. They read the notice.
Anyway, I was scheduled to come and request a few hours for that from Mr. Corbo, but next to the emails he and I had today was a email from Mr. Springer at 2:23 requesting a cancellation.
Of the, of this hearing?
Of this hearing, of his application.
Okay.
Because he could legally show up and ask for a continuance for some, whatever reason. Yeah, but that would be like two weeks. And for whatever reason, he has asked for a cancellation.
So you'll put that on the website if you decide to cancel it?
Yeah, I need to get that out probably in the morning. But one of us, the practice we've had with, happened a few times before, one of us or more will sit here. So Dave Alberti and I are going to sit here and play checkers and see who shows up.
See who shows up.
And I guess we'll wait to see when and if it's reapplied, at which time I, I think we would want a few hours of Mr. Corbo for that because from the correspondence that he and the zoning, the applicant and the zoning officer have had, there's some issues going on.
Okay. All right, so...
Ask for my lawyer hours tonight, save that.
Perfect.
And I'll put a cancellation of that hearing.
Okay, that sounds great, Ken. Okay. All right, rants and raves. Do you want to go first?
Well, I think I already did my rave in a way. The new search committee or selection committee for town administrator, we ended up with some of the best and brightest and people I think we're all very comfortable with and blessed to have those people volunteering their time and it's very much appreciated.
All right. All right, I'll go next. Totally mix it up. All right, my rant, or I'll start with my rave. My rave is tonight having all these people come to the meeting. How nice it is to have an audience and people come and participate. So that was great. It was a, a topic that many people were concerned about and I feel like we're going to be working together to, to look at all the options. So I think that was, that was good that, that we had it on the agenda and they, they had an opportunity to come in and voice their concerns. My, my rant is politics entering sports. How I am very unhappy with it. Sports activities are generally a release for people, you know, to watch a game and it's kind of, you don't have to think about what's happening in the world. And it's just, it's kind of sad that it's now becoming political.
But we won.
Yeah, we won.
Both games at the same time? That was amazing. Red Sox and the Patriots, whoo.
A, B.
Exactly, right. As long as they didn't, the commercials would sync so you could...
Perfect, perfect.
So my rave is, I was on the cable website. I usually take a look at our meetings to make sure I haven't missed anything that I'm supposed to do.
A second trip through?
Not, no, I skip around. That's the beauty of the cable is that you can go doom, doom. And because of that, I happened to stumble on this interview that was done with our selectmen, with Ken Simmons.
Is that on?
It's on cable and I said, gee, I'll watch this. And it was really informative. It was on holistic medicine for pets. And I thought you did a great job of explaining the, the benefits and why you think it works. It was very enlightening. So if you're interested in this, this holistic medicine for animals, I would encourage you to go and take a look at that particular event on there.
Can I do a little adendum on that? The best part of that show, Ken Simmons at the beginning, what a wonderful old gentleman. I don't remember his exact...
He's a piece of work.
Piece of work. At the beginning, he had his little dog with him and I'm not sure that was on camera, but he was talking about cherishing every kiss while he was looking down at his dog. And it was a wonderful way to start the show.
Oh, that's so sweet. Very sweet.
You did a good job. You both did.
Well, and it's nice that, you know, you're able to do that and hopefully more people will start to come out and do these videos and, you know, informational.
Anyone that has a chance to spend time with Ken, special human being, special, special human being.
All right, anything else? All right, I'll make a motion we adjourn.
Done, good night.
All right. Good night.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye, aye, aye.